I don't want to take up too much time, so with that, we're going to start off with opening remarks. And Mr. Moses drew number one.
Thank you for having me. Appreciate it. I'm Jason Moses, District One School Board Candidate. I'm a Chanaq firefighter full-time. I have 24-hour shifts. I'm on red shift. I'm a lieutenant. I've been there 11 years. Prior to that, I was with Chanaq Police Department. I did a transfer from the Police Department to Fire Department. Seems like everybody likes firemen a lot better than they do policemen. A lot less stressful job. The police may got a lot tougher job. My family right here. I've got my wife Jill, my son Jason Jax. Jax goes, he's only going to new school, Fallwater, I'm sorry. Came from Fallwater, going to
Middle Valley.
Middle Valley Elementary. And my son Jason be going to Hickson Middle. That's where my wife teaches at, Hickson High School. I live in District One, but my boys are zoned for District Three schools. The other ones are zoned for District Two. We've already taken them to District Three. I got a St. Heights Baptist Church. One of the SROs going on, Cloverdale, I got the one in Cloverdale. There's one in Slay Daisy here. We sometimes attend that one also. I've always had a passion for schools and running for school board. And this time, I've tried to be, I've never been in politics before. I want to go for it this time, see if I can make a difference for the children and teachers.
Thank you. Dr. Skates?
Good evening. Thank you to Unified Ed for putting this on. I am Patty Skates. I have been in Hamilton County, I've been back 44 years. I have spent 24, almost 24 years in the classroom in Hamilton County. Then I went into Georgia and taught three years. And now I work for Georgia Northwestern Technical College, which is working with dual enrollment kids, taking college classes in the high school. In fact, I have about 900 that I work with. Georgia Northwestern has the most in the state of Georgia. I'm running for school board District One. Why? Because I have a passion. I have been in the classroom. I have worked with students. I didn't have the AP or the dual enrollment students. I had regular students. At one time, it was said that 10 or 15% of the students didn't want to be there. We just need to cut them loose. That was the students I had. We don't cut them loose. I have been, something was said about me being part of the union. Yes, I belong to HCEA and I belong to TEA. Just like doctors belong to their group, nurses belong to a group, CPAs belong to a group. I belong to the teachers group. To make better opportunities for teachers in the classroom. That's what it's all about. I've also been accused of being beholden. Yes, I'm beholden. I'm beholden to you, you the taxpayers. I'm beholden to the teachers, to the students, to the community. We are at a crossroads right now. If we don't do something with our education system, we're going to have problems. And here's the opportunity. Going around in District One, people are saying they want to change. I hope that I can bring that change, have the opportunity. I'm also Vice Mayor of Saudi Daisy. We work with a budget. Being a member on the Saudi Daisy Commission is a lot like being on the school board. Policy procedures, set a budget, hire the city manager or superintendent, depending on which one you're on. That's what we will be doing coming up after the August election. We need to bring someone that is going to directly lead this community to be better than what it has been. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. First, I want to thank Unified Ed as well for putting this on. I want to thank all of you for coming, spending your night here with us to find more about our education in District One. Most of you know me. You know that I'm not here to dazzle you with my brilliance. And I'm also not here to baffle you with a bunch of bull. I'm here to shoot you straight. I'll tell you the facts. That's just the way that I am. I've been District One School Board Representative since 2004, so I bring experience and institutional knowledge to this campaign. I do not have ties to any special interest groups, none. I'm only interested in what is best for our kids and our community. I am just like you. I go to work and I pay taxes. I've never had a paid day off in my life. When I don't work, I don't get paid. So when I see my tax dollars being spent in an inefficient manner, it makes me mad and it should make you mad as well. That is why for the last 12 years, I've worked to get zero-based budgeting to find money to put back into the classroom. I've also tried a years past to get the HCDE check registry posted online, so everyone can see where the money is being spent. While on the school board, I have worked hard to build relationships at the county, state, and school levels. These relationships have allowed huge successes in District One, such as the addition to Cell Creek Middle High, Cell Creek Middle High Ball Field improvements, the New Daisy Elementary entrance, donations to Sequoia Vocational School. Those are just a few that have happened in just the last few months. Some of these projects have taken years to bring to fruition. The Daisy Elementary entrance has taken about 10 years. It's a half a million dollar project. I've got the numbers on it today. It's over $500,000, I'm sorry, $500,000. It's a half a million dollar project to get that down. It took a long time and a lot of people to be involved in that. There are many times when I've had to stand alone on the school board. As most of you know, a lot of times it was eight to one vote. I was usually the one vote. So when they talk about change, you know to get changed, what you do is you change the people that are in the majority. You don't change the people that are in the minority. That never has made sense to me. One of the times I had to stand alone was the times when I exposed the unlimited accrual vacation days. They were accruing off of the 10 and a half, 11, and 12-month employees. They had unlimited accrual vacation days. We were spending out between $500,000 and a million dollars a year. And we got that stopped. And the teachers' union went along with that agreement with the administrators as well, to let them have that. I am as conservative with your money as I am with mine. And I use a common sense approach to resolving problems. And I'm committed to continue working to move District One forward. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. The first question is for Dr. Skates. Well, it's for all of you. Dr. Skates will start. The most important decision the next school board will make is the hiring of the next superintendent. How will you go about making that decision? What characteristics are important in a new superintendent? And what should the process look like?
That is going to be the most important thing that the school board is going to do after August. If elected, I think already in place, they have hired a consulting firm to look at candidates. I think that's correct. We need to put the best leader, because that's what a superintendent does. He leads, or she leads. So we need to find the best of the best to take over. It's going to be a lot of work. It's not going to happen overnight, but we need to put that in. One thing that we also need to do that has not been done with the last three superintendents, or if so, has been done at a very minimal level, and that is put in community input. We need to see what the community needs, what they want. We also need to listen to their suggestions. Then we need to find the best one. Is it a business person? Is it an educator? Is it a combination of both? We need to find the best person to lead this district and make Hamilton County schools good again, or the best that they can be. When I came in 1988, we were a good school system. When I left in 2010, we were hurting, and we're still hurting. And a lot of that has come out in the past year. We have got to make a decision. If we do not do now, with the opportunity of bringing in a new school superintendent that will work with this community, have a vision, they may have to think out of the box. Education is not what education was when I first started teaching. We have all kinds of technology. We have all kinds of diversity coming into our areas. We have all kinds of problems. We need to address those. We need to be open to new ideas. We need community input. We need business input. We need teacher, principal input. And then as our job with the policy and procedures, then we will choose the best person. It's being done all over this state. We've already had two or three that have had to have new superintendents. So I think we can get the best. It may not be local. We may have to go outside. And if that be the case, that's fine. We have to have somebody that is going to lead us in the right direction to make sure that our students are prepared, once they graduate, to either go to college or go out into the business world.
Well, I'm going to sit down if that's okay. First of all, we have not picked a search firm yet. We will be doing that at the next school board meeting. The RFP just went out. We will be doing that at the next, at the next school board meeting. A couple of things. You didn't think there was ever community input? Yes, there was. We had meetings all over this town when we hired Dr. Skates. We had them in every district. We had a huge one at the Chuchu. We had another huge meeting at the Trade Center. We, there have already been out, I know Unified Ed has already had meetings all over in every district, getting input from the community. And you know, everybody wants the same thing in a superintendent. I've yet to hear anybody say, "I want somebody dumb, stupid, and ugly for a superintendent." I mean, we all want the same things. We all want the best that we can get. We all want, you know, somebody that's going to lead us forward. All these are just canned phrases that people come up with. We all want the same things. The problem is getting that person. And before, we've had the doctors, and as far as I'm concerned, Dr. Register did as much around the time that you're talking about with the merger of the school to destroy this school system than anybody, a good doctor. Dr. Skates didn't help a whole lot either. And when we hired Rick Smith, the community wanted somebody local as superintendent, because we'd had two from outside. So the community did have an input in that as well. And also, you say about, there was time for a change. Well, you know, things have been going downhill. That's why I voted against everything almost that we've done in this school system. If more people had voted with me, things might look a whole lot differently than they do right now. Right now, on the school board, we have four teachers, two people who are married to teachers, and then me and a couple more. I mean, I ask you, we have representation for those. What we need here is representation for us. We also need a representation in the superintendent. We need somebody that's a good manager of people. That's the main thing. That's what their job is. We have one employee that's a superintendent. We don't employ anybody else at the school board. We have one employee that's a superintendent. I'm looking for someone who will be willing to do a zero-based budgeting, that will start every department with zero and let them add up what they need, instead of just keep piling on every year to what they had last year and add some more this year. That's how we've gotten upside down in our budget. Someone that's a good communicator. Someone to be able to match talent, that matches talents and positions. And I don't think a doctor is necessary at all. I think we need a business-type person. This is a big business. It's a $400 million business. And I think we need a business person. ACT scores have continued to decline every year, even under two doctors. So being a doctor is just not real important to me. I want someone that knows how to run a business and put people where they need to be with their talents.
I agree. We've got to find the right superintendent. The budget is $417 million, not $40 million, $400 million. We've got to find someone that can run a $400 million budget. There were 5,000 employees. So this is a big job. Got to have 42,000 students. It's got to be over all this. We need somebody that can do all this. I'm not sure a school teacher can do it. If they can, great. Let's give them. Not only get a search firm to find this person for us that can run this kind of multi-million dollar budget. We need the teachers' input, the community's input. We need everybody's input on this, so we can get the right leader for our schools.
Okay. Ms. Thurman, we'll start with the next question. We know that great teaching is one of the most important factors in ensuring successful schools. How can our district ensure that it is attracting and retaining the best possible teaching talent? And how will you ensure that new teachers are successful?
Well, right now, we have, we pay a teacher recruiter to go out and find teachers. Also, we give incentives. We have all kinds of incentives for teachers. Teaching, we pay a teaching incentive for teachers that teach in our hard-to-staff schools. There are other ways that we have to keep teachers in the schools. But one of the biggest things we could do to keep the teachers in school, the biggest argument and the biggest gripe that I have of anything is behavior. I very rarely, well, I have never had a teacher tell me they quit because of the pay, because they knew the pay going in. I very rarely hear that. I don't get to have ever heard that. But I do about the behavior. Matter of fact, I heard a teacher tonight just tell me about some of the behavior of their students. That is the way you retain teachers, is get a handle on the behavior. Get a handle on the discipline. You will be amazed at how much different the classroom will look. You can take, I guarantee you, you took just about 10% of the kids out of certain schools, you wouldn't have any problems. Tobin is sitting back there, and I know he's a principal, and he knows that's a fact. There's very few people that cause all the problems. And so if we could just get those people grinded in, the classroom would look a whole lot different than it does now. Also, the respect of the teachers. Right now, we have just let the respect for the teachers go by the wayside. How that ever happened, I don't know. But it has to be an administrative decision. But these kids that don't respect their teachers and talk back to them and use foul language, in some schools, we've just given up on even curtail and foul language. And it's just completely out of control. And that's another thing we need a superintendent. That's why I really like the fact that we had a retired Marine that wanted to be the superintendent of our schools. I was really excited about that, because to me, I think he could have gotten a lot of things under control. And that's the kind of person that we needed, to handle, somebody that these young boys, and young girls too, some of the young girls were worse. Rain them in and make them show a little respect for the people in charge of their school. But I think that teacher recruitment, we have teacher recruiter that we pay at the central office to go out and recruit teachers. Now, how we can make sure that every teacher is successful, I don't have a clue. We offer them every opportunity to take the classes. Matter of fact, most teachers think we give them too much opportunity to go pull them out of their classrooms. Most of them would rather spend more time in their classroom than out of classrooms as much as they're pulled out for teacher training. So, you know, some people just weren't meant to be teachers. Maybe they don't want to be teachers. Maybe when they get in there, it wasn't what they thought it was going to be. But also, some teachers are non-renewed, and sometimes that's a principal problem. Maybe a principal has a personality conflict with the teacher. We see that sometimes. And maybe, I think a lot of teachers have gone by the wayside, which is another thing. I think that even teachers now, when they're non-rehired, you can never work for Hamilton County again. I think if you're non-rehired in one school, if another principal wants to take a chance on you, you should be able to do that. And that's one way I've been fighting for teachers for years, to try to get. And the teachers' union agrees, I guess, with that, because it's part of our policy, that we need to change that.
I agree. We need to listen to teachers more. Give them what they ask for. A parapro is a huge asset to teachers. The teachers are coming in overwhelmed, all this, everything they've got going on. A parapro could come in and help them out tremendously. And then if the parapro worked out good, maybe we can hire the parapro. We need to try to ask teachers if they're having problems, what they are, try to help them, try to meet their needs. And if bad teachers, we need to get rid of them. And I guess, like I wanted to say, if there's another principal willing to take a chance, I agree with that. I give them a second chance. They have a personality conflict. I wanted to say it.
The first thing we need to do when it comes to hiring teachers, we need to have an HR, a true HR department. We have educators that are being moved out of the classroom, from principalship or any other department, and put into HR, the head of HR or teachers. I don't know that any of you could go into your place of business and be the HR person. It takes a special person, because there's so many federal laws, state laws, that they have to go by. We need a true professional HR. We do need to recruit. I'm glad we didn't have a recruiter. We need to work hard on getting the best teachers coming in, working with the universities, local universities. That will bring some in. The other thing is how to retain the teachers. When teachers leave, they just turn in their notice. Some don't even do that. There is no explanation, no requirement to find out why they're leaving. That might help retain some. The other thing is when we hire new teachers, we need to have mentors that are in that school to work with those teachers. When I went to Red Bank, I was number 96 in seniority. When I left in 2010, I was number four. We had turnover, a huge turnover of teachers. We need to encourage some of our seasoned teachers to stay, so that they can be mentors. When a new teacher comes in, there are things that we don't think of seasoned teachers until it happens. And so many times, a new teacher comes in, is put in the classroom, and says, "Go to it." We've got to work with those new teachers. Discipline is a problem. And you can have 10 SROs in a school, that's not going to stop something from happening. It may deter it. It may put it off. But we do need to work on working with these students. Many of them come from a one-parent household, and that parent, they may not see every day. So we've got to be there. We've got to offer things for them to help them, to build respect. ROTC is a great opportunity to do that. No, it's not a recruitment for the military, but it does teach them respect. It teaches them structure. And that's what a lot of these students that come from these homes need.
In a 2013 poll of Hamilton County citizens, we learned that the majority of voters support increasing resources for public schools as long as they know those resources will directly improve outcomes for students. How will you work to ensure taxpayers that money spent on schools is being spent efficiently and effectively?
I would ask a lot of questions. I get involved, I'm the PTA Vice President at Fallwater Elementary, or was PTA Vice President, Fallwater Elementary. I'm getting involved. I go to PTA meetings and find out what parents and the teachers and the kids want, need. I find out from the teachers as well. I get really involved and find out what we need and what we want to work, and ask questions. I've asked a lot of questions. I don't know everything. I'm trying to learn this as much as I can. I'm hearing from school bus drivers and cafeteria workers, more than just teachers and kids in the school system. I'm trying to learn everything as fast as I can, as quick as I can. And of course, all the systems have inputs too, so I'm trying to listen to everybody's needs and trying to do the best I can do if I was eleven.
We cannot, as a school board, go continually to the county commission and say, "We need money, we need money, we need money." We don't have something to show for that money. And they're not going to be willing to give us more money until we start showing results. ACTs have gone down. Graduation rates have gone down. We have got to show progress. Once progress is shown, then I think we will be able to get more money. Right now, Hamilton County is spending almost $10,000 per student. You go across the state line, teachers are making more money, but they're only spending about $8,500 to $9,000 per student. So we've got to look. We need to look at central office. We have secretaries in central office making $69,000. That is more than twice a teacher's starting salary. We cannot continue going to the county commission and asking. And I think the community wants to see results too. I think they want to see improvement. And I think once that is done, once we get the spending under control, then if there is things that we need, then I think they'll be more likely to give what we need. They'll be more receptive to that. But we have got to do that.
I've been on the board. I have seen, when I first got on the board, the school board was spending about a million dollars a day. In 12 years, we were up to $2 million a day to run the school system. So the taxpayer's been very generous during that time. ACT scores have declined. Graduation rate have declined. There's some things we can do at the school board that would change that, if we could just get the votes to do it. I have brought up to bring back traditional scheduling to all of the schools, instead of block scheduling. Block scheduling is so much more expensive, requires so many more teachers. I don't know if you know the difference. It's too much to go into now, but I know a lot of people in here do know the difference. It's very expensive to run a school system on block scheduling. We started that here again, under some of our good doctors that we have at the school system. So that's one way we could save millions of dollars, just by that one thing alone. Also, it was discovered, because I did call the state and ask, nobody at Hamilton County seemed to know, that right now, we're requiring everyone to take four years of math and two years of foreign language. The only way people can pass four years of math is to make it where everybody can pass it, and you're just watering down for the people that really, who really need it. Also, the two years of foreign language, we could have waived that requirement years ago, and we have not done that. We have been forcing kids to take two years of foreign language. There are two, just think of all the teachers that we had to pay for students to take classes if they didn't have to have, to graduate in the state of Tennessee. Makes me angry that we've not addressed that before now. I am not a cheerleader for tax increase. What a lot of special interest groups want us to be, that's not me. That's not my deal. That's not our job. Our job as a school board is to set policies, procedures, and vote on the budget. That's what we do. We have one employee and that's a superintendent. And until we can show that we are doing something and making some honest effort to get this rain in the school budget, the county commission thought it'll give us any more money. So every year, we go through this dog and pony show of going to the commission and telling them how many more million dollars we need. No, we're going to get shot down. We just waste a lot of time instead of digging our heels in and doing our homework and doing what needs to be done on the budget. Like I say, I'm all for zero-based budgeting. I think that's where you have to start. Just start at zero and make everybody, make everybody give a reason for every dollar they want in their department. And until we do that, nothing's really going to change. But, like I say, I just, I just think that until we can do what we can do on the school board, and it's free of charge, we could sit down and just, the school board members could do this, but we can't get five of us together to do it, because nobody wants to do the hard work, or nobody wants to cut out their friend's job. And that's what you run into a lot of times when you get a lot of educators on the school board. They don't want to cut out their friends' jobs. Or they don't want to cut out that position, because they would have to say that their job, their friend's job is unimportant. That's a problem.
How will you work with other school board members and the county commission to implement changes for District One and the entire school system? And how would you overcome political obstacles?
First of all, we have got to work as a school board. It cannot be nine districts going after nine different things. Yes, I'll represent District One, and yes, there are things that are needed in District One, but we have things that are needed in Districts two through nine. It's a group effort. It also takes compromise. As a board member, you have to work with the other board members. You may have to make a compromise. Will it always be the right compromise? Don't know, until that particular subject comes up. But you also have to work with the county commission. And you will never hear me say, "I don't have to work with the county commissioner. He has to work with me." The county commission is the funding source, and that's who we've got to work with. We need to have a relationship, not only with our district commissioner, but we also need to have a relationship with the other district commissioners. It's a group effort. They are the funding system. We have to show what is needed. We have to explain what is needed. And we have to work together. And I think if there's changing coming about this time, I think that you will find that the county commissioners, the school board commissioners, will work together, both on the school board, both on the county commission, as well as each other.
Well, if you think that the other school board members vote to let you have $500,000 of money without a fight, you have lost your minds, because it will not happen. You better dig your heels in. You better be ready to fight. And you better be ready to make your case for the money you want. It's not all kumbal, y'all. You can't sit around and hold hands. Yes, I realize there are things, like when I voted for the upgrades for the stadium or the repairs to the other stadiums, I realize I'm on the school board and that I represent all the districts of Hamilton County. But I am the representative for District One, and I will fight for every dollar that we can get. And I'm not real good about compromising, because when I go into a fight, I do all I can to come out a winner. And here lately, I've been coming out a winner quite a bit, because I have a lot to show for it. As far as the commissioners, I have every one of the commissioners on my cell phone. I call them all. Warren Mackey comes by to see me, brings me blueberries, does all kinds of things. I have a Tim Boyd called me the other day. Every commissioner on there, I talk to Chester Lake, and on a regular basis. I don't have a problem talking to any of the commissioners. I never have had. I call and talk to them, tell them what I need. That's one, that's one way we get some of the money that we do for District One. You just call and you make your case. Now, the school board and I may not vote together, but I tell you one thing, they do respect me. They have a great amount of respect for me, because I show up at school board meetings prepared to vote. I know exactly what I'm voting on. I've done my homework. And every school board member will tell you, "Oh, gosh, you has a lot of..." will tell you, "Oh gosh, she has a lot of tabs on her little papers tonight." I tab them, I mark them, I highlight them, I know what I'm gonna ask when I go in. So if it requires a fight, I'm ready for a fight. I don't roll over and play dead very often, except with my mom. And, but I just, uh, you know, it's to think that, uh, you, if everybody always agrees on everything, then somebody's unnecessary. I mean, if, if all the school board members are always gonna vote for what the superintendent wants, then you're, they usually need the superintendent, you don't need the other school board members. And if I'm right, and I know I'm right, I'm gonna fight. And like I say, it doesn't bother me to stand alone. But one thing you can say about the other school board members, even the ones that I've disagreed with adamantly, they respect me. And matter of fact, some of them have called since they've been on the school board, and have given me atta boys, and "Way to go, Rhonda," and "You know what, you were right." And "You know what Dr. Skel- Register did when he left here after he closed our enrollment?" He went, and I've been ranting and raving about that ever since he did it, closed enrollment here in Hamilton County. He went to Nashville and opened their enrollment to help students' scores. And I called, I sent him a nice little email, too, and said, "Hey, I appreciate the accolades for taking my ideas." But, like I say, uh, if I don't get along with others, I get along with them personally, we just disagree philosoph- on our philosophy about how school, uh, education should be. And that's just, that's just the way it is. I'm looking at things from a taxpayer point of view, most of the school board members are looking at it from educator point of view. Two entirely different viewpoints. And like I say, I'm gonna fight for the, fight for the taxpayers every time.
Our argument really, uh, has good outcomes. Uh, I might just work with all the commissioners, I know Sarah Belogen, uh, personally, too, her cell phone number, too. They don't call me as much as I actually call Rhonda, but I do talk to them quite a bit myself, trying to get into politics here, trying to know what, what their advice is and what I can do to make the scores better. Uh, one thing I have on, I can compromise people, talk to people, get things done. I'll compromise this, they'll do this, and I think I'm pretty good at that, you accomplish things pretty good.
As highlighted by Chattanooga 2.0, currently only one in three HCD graduates are likely to go on to earn any type of post-secondary credential. What can the school board and the district do to ensure that more, more students are graduating prepared to succeed in college and career?
First thing we need to do is teach them to read. Unless you can teach them to read in, uh, you know, there for a long time, we taught kids to read in the first grade. Then we went down to kindergarten to get kids ready to go to first grade. Now we're starting in pre-K to get them ready to go to kindergarten, to get them ready to go to first grade. I said, "I just keep waiting on, you know, the school board members to be standing there waiting on babies to be born in the delivery room and whisk them out to some government program to try to teach them something." You know, we need to teach kids to read. You try to teach them to read in pre-K, there's a fellow in here that I had a nice, uh, lengthy conversation about that, I won't point you out, but you know who you are, that we're trying to teach kids, to teach things, we're trying to teach kids to learn things before they're developmentally ready. You try to teach pre-K kids to read, a lot of them are not ready for that, they're just not. Teachers will tell you by the, by Christmas of the first grade, you can't tell which kids have been in pre-K and which ones haven't, because their brains develop pretty much at the, at the same time. And they're ready, they're ripe and ready to learn at that time. And I know some people shaking their heads, and I don't really care about, I have, I have data that can back me up all day long on this. So, you know, if pre-K is wonderful, and my grandson's gonna go to pre-K, and I don't have a problem with that, but, uh, anyway, we're, we're dropping the balls in elementary school. When you get a child in middle school who can't read, what are you gonna teach them? I mean, you can't teach them social studies, you can't teach them science, you can't teach them word problems in math. And until we get that right, then nothing, not a whole lot's gonna change. And in high school, like I said, one thing is, I hope to be able to, this next year, I'm not sure if it's gonna be this next year or the next year, this coming school year or the next year, the kids won't have to, the students will not have to take two years of a foreign language, it's not required by the state, they can opt out, we can get waivers for that. Uh, that will help a lot of people, especially in vocational schools, so they can spend more time on their vocation. Because now, we have kids who are having to take foreign languages two and three times to pass. Look at all that teacher times wasted, look at all that student time is wasted on things that they could be really honing in on what they want to do with their vocation. I mean, I'm all about getting things done, and that's one thing that we can do to ensure that these kids do not get frustrated, they're angry, some of them, that they have to take a foreign language that they don't want, and they don't feel like they're gonna need to be a welder. Uh, they, they don't wanna do those kinds of things. So that's one way we can get our graduation rates up. And like I say, if you go from one school that has traditional scheduling, go to another school that has block scheduling, you're all messed up on your classes, and it takes a long time to get readjusted to where you need to be. So those are the things, like I say, we can fix on the school board, it won't cost any money, as a matter of fact, it will save millions.
Out of the graduating seniors last year, only sixty percent of them at the Chatham State were ready for college. Six percent of them had to take remedial classes at Chatham State. We've gotta do better to get our, uh, students ready to go to college in high school. Uh, since the community loves, um, the magnet schools, we need to try to get more magnet schools, uh, but people are waiting in line to get the magnet schools. We need to try to place more of our schools on the magnet school ideal, uh, versus traditional style, because it sounds like that's what the community wants.
We need to make sure that every child in Hamilton County is given the best education. We have some districts that have high poverty, we have some districts that have low poverty. But every district in Hamilton County has some poverty, and I believe that was part of the question. We need to address that. We need to make sure that those children, when they come into school, whether it be pre-K or kindergarten, that they get the best that they can be. The studies have shown that by the, by the time that a child is in the third grade, and they're not reading properly at third grade level, then as they continue on and are past on, they're just gonna fall further behind. We have got to educate them, we need to spend the dollars to educate them, because if we don't, and they drop out, or they finish school and go nowhere, we're going to be using tax dollars to pay their welfare, or we're going to be using tax dollars to pay for incarceration. That's sad. Not every child is wanting to, or meant to go to college, a four-year college. We need to stress more on the vocational and technical, that's what I deal with on an everyday basis. You ask the community, businesses, what they need. You find out what they need. First of all, we need a vocational, a technical school north of the river, and we need one south of the river, and they don't need to be punishments. If you misbehave in class, we'll send you to those schools, like has been done in the past. We need plumbers, we need ironworkers, we need auto mechanics, we need, uh, heating and air, necronics is the new buzzword, uh, it's all in all the technology. We need to have those things. We need to know which students are wanting to go to college, test them to make sure they're ready, so that when they go to Chattanooga State, or they go to UTC, or they go someplace else, they don't have to take remedial classes. That goes against their hope hours if they're on Hope Scholarship. If they're not wanting to go to college, but they want to do, I've got a student right now in Georgia that is going to class, he is going to be a video game creator. He's got a job waiting on him when he finishes school outside of Atlanta. He graduates in December, he will go into a job, and he's going to be making fifty-two thousand dollars. We need to find where these students need to be, put them there, give them the best education, whether they're poverty or high dollar.
So I want to ensure that we have plenty of time for audience questions, so I'm gonna go ahead and skip to the next part, which is the candidate to candidate questions. And I believe we are at Mr. Moses, you're the first one who gets to ask Mr. Thurman a question.
Rhonda, uh, both my boys are in District One, but they go to different schools. How would you address that? As far as supporting their schools? Being, not being hot, you know, both boys go to, outside the district, and we're, we're District One residents, and the boys go to different schools.
Okay, okay, uh, okay, your kids go to school outside, is that what you hardship them into?
No, no, I'm sorry, they zone for Redmond, another one's zone for, uh, Dan Middlebauer. So they, they don't wanna, if they did, wouldn't go to the right school.
You know, I always try to, but I guarantee you, if there's something that District Three or something else needs, and there's some money out there available, I will fight for it, but, and, you know, I, like I say, I'm on the Hamilton County School Board, and it seems we make it for the good of the whole district. Uh, you know, we don't have one academics for one school, and another academics for another school, it's for the, for the whole, uh, for the whole school system, so. So, you know, I would hope the need vote I would make would, would help your students, your sons, as much as they would the people in District One. Uh, like I say, except for when it comes to cap- capital, uh, project money and things like that, every decision we make should be for the good of all students, not just the students in District One.
Okay, Mrs. Gates, that's Mr. Moses with a question.
Jason, I would like for you to tell us about your passion, how, um, you're planning to put that to work if you're elected on the school board, but your passion for education, and maybe give us some examples of where you come from.
Dr. Skates, thank you. Uh, I come from a public service background, uh, I've started the public for the last fifteen and a half years. Uh, my passion is the kids, uh, teachers and kids. I have a real passion for, and I'd like to try to do my part to, uh, see that, uh, teachers and kids get what they deserve.
Okay, Ms. Thurman, ask Dr. Skates a question.
Yes, I have a question for Ms. Gates. Ms. Gates, on your mail out that people got in the mail, it says that you, it was time for change, that it was time for honesty on the school board. I just wanna know, exactly who is it on the school board you think is not honest?
I don't think it's any one person, but I think that we have not been transparent with the budget to the communities. Uh, there's, needs to be transparency. Um, I also think that when you vote no, you need to tell why you vote no. Um, the last twelve budgets, I believe, have been no by you. Um, have you brought suggestions, have you tried to compromise? That's not been, that's not been told, or it has been told, or it hasn't?
Did you go to school board meetings?
Yes, I've been to school.
Oh, no, you haven't, because I don't see you the room to smile like this.
I'm gonna let, let Ms. Dr. Skates finish.
It's fine.
I'm sorry, that's not true.
Um, I have been to some school board meetings, am I at every school board meeting? No. Uh, but I have been to school board meetings in the past. We have gotten to have transparency and honesty from everybody on that school board.
Ms. Thurman gets one minute to respond.
Okay, well, there was a lot said there. I have voted against every budget, if you had been to our budget meetings, in our budget work sessions, you would hear the gazillion questions that I have asked over the last twelve years. I named off some of them here tonight, trying to get things changed, trying to work to get, uh, changes in the budget, trying to cut things out of the budget. You can't, like Ronald Reagan said one time, the best, the closest thing to eternal off here on earth is a government program, and it's, no reason is that any more true than in the school. We have more programs that have not worked, that have failed, the kids are still failing using them after thirty years, and they need to be gone, they need to go away. But in order to do that, you have to cut out positions, and so many people on the board are not willing to do that. I am, some others are not. Yes, you ask any school board member, past, present, they will tell you, no one comes any more prepared with any more suggestions than me. And to say that we're not honest and transparent, uh, they're not as transparent with me as I'd like for them to be, but that's certainly not the school board's fault. We try and try to get the, uh, budget out where everybody can see it, and you're welcome to any of the meetings, they're all open to the public.
Okay, Dr. Skates gets the first question in the next round. These are all audience questions. Um, first one, how do you expect to fix discipline in a school when society won't let you punish the student?
We need to work with the court system, we need to work with the state legislators, so that we have rules in, on the books. We set policy and procedures, we need to stick by those policy procedures, we need to update those policy and procedures. Right before school was out, we had a young man who showed up to school who had been intoxicated. It's a zero tolerance policy, drugs and alcohol. He wasn't expelled. The only thing that happened to him was he was not allowed to walk in graduation. That's a fall down on Hamilton County's part. We need to have policies and procedures that work, we need to work with the court system, as I said, so that we can get laws changed, we need to talk to the judges, we need to make sure that they uphold what the law says they do, to do, and we also need to go to the state level, uh, and try to make some of the changes there.
Yes, one of the situations she was talking about with the young man, he showed up to school, uh, and it got to be a kind of a technical issue, we don't, we don't discipline the students. We have, uh, the Student Services, Dr. McDay, disciplines the students and sends it to us, and if the kids, if the parents want to appeal to us, they appeal to us, and we can either uphold his or find him innocent. So that's what we had to do, we had to uphold Dr. McDay's, uh, discipline. If he had gotten a zero tolerance, he would not have been able to start college until a year from that date, because we, we held his diploma. Dr. McDay made that call, and we either had to vote yes, that was the right call, or say he was not guilty, and not even, and lead him on at graduations, those were the only two choices we had to make. So you're confused about how the system works, but that's how it works. Uh, also about getting control of discipline, uh, we, we could start by letting the principals, uh, have a little bit more leeway about how they handle things, and we need to quit worrying about who gets, who gets expelled, we need to quit worrying about what race gets expelled, what gender gets expelled. I think we just need to have a category of who gets expelled at what school, not even put with their male, female, black, white, Hispanic, or whatever, so we don't have to worry about those sorts of things. Uh, a lot of times, they don't, they don't suspend students because they don't, uh, want to hurt their graduation rates, or they don't want to hurt their attendance rates. We get all caught up in all that kind of thing, instead of worrying about what's best in the classroom. Uh, I had one teacher tell me, he said, in some classes that he had at the school, where he told, he only had three students show up for classes on lots of days, most he ever had was like seven. That is sad, in a high school, that is really, really sad. Uh, because they want, they want every person they can to get there in a seat, that these kids are not showing up for school, we need to deal with those, and either get them off the rolls, or, and Patty said, we can get rid of them, I'm not saying get rid of them, if they don't wanna come to school, and we can't make them, they're hurting us on attendance, we need to deal with that problem, too, because all they do is show up at school and cause problems.
Dr. Skates, you were specifically mentioned, you want to respond?
There's nothing else I can have, I do know, add, I do know the policy and the procedures and what they can and cannot do, and it's not always solid.
I think we need to give more power to the teachers in the classroom, and, and they can't handle it more, and the principals need to have the power to handle it. And if the principal can't have it, then they, they leave the school, they go to the central office, and say they can handle it. They need to give the principals and teachers more power on, uh, discipline, and get these kids under control, uh, maybe get the parents more on board, I know it's sometimes hard to do, get the parents, uh, most of the problem, the kids are, got problem with parents. So it'd be nice to somehow get the parents, uh, more involved, uh, somehow, maybe, uh, ask them to come to more events, and get the parents more involved with their kids' lives.
Ms. Thurman, you get to go first on the next question. Do you see teachers as professionals, and if so, why are they asked slash highly suggested to attend professional development without pay?
Obviously, they didn't have to go to all the professional development. Uh, sometimes I think the teachers are smarter than the people that are teaching them. Uh, you tell, I have one, a customer who had been a teacher for, uh, thirty-eight years, uh, her, she taught at Wallace Smith, uh, her, her students always scored at the, the top of the chart and everything, and she was having to go take teacher training classes from someone who had only been teaching like four years. So I have a big problem with that. Uh, that happens all over the, um, happens all over the county. Uh, I don't ask teachers to take professional development, I guess they just, I don't, I don't know why, that has to be a teacher union thing, I guess, I don't know. Uh, they deal with that in their negotiations, I don't know, like is it during, during school time, is that the time they're talking about, being called out of the class during school time, or are they talking about going in the summer, I'm not sure what they're talking about. Yeah, I'm not sure either, but if it's during school time, they are getting paid, but if it's away from there, I guess sometimes they get stipends and sometimes they won't, I, I don't have any idea which ones they get paid for and which ones they don't.
Same question, yes. Do you see teachers as professionals, if so, why are they asked slash highly suggested to attend professional development without pay?
I see teachers as real professionals, really supportive, support me. My wife is one that also, she, when I really admire teachers, the hard work they do. As far as, uh, asking why they go on, uh, professional development without pay, we need to look into that. I don't know, I'm on a school board member, uh, but I can try to find out why, and, uh, see what I can do to get that changed.
It's not a union thing. The contract says if you go to professional development, then you're gonna get paid, unless they have changed the, the contract since I left. So that's a central office thing. Professional development, when it's done, it can be handled, it can be used for the teachers, particularly new teachers. it can be used for the teachers, particularly new teachers coming on board. And I agree, a lot of times you have people coming in that are not highly qualified to do that. But we need to make sure that when we have professional development for teachers, whether it's in the summertime or it's during the school year, that they are paid. And if there's teachers that have been told that they have to do that, then you definitely have a grievance because the contract says that if you go to professional development, you will be paid for it.
Okay, Mr. Moses, you get to start first on this one. Do you see public education as a business?
I do from the, uh, superintendent standpoint and the superintendent standpoint only. Uh, it's, uh, it needs to be ran like a business. When you talk about four hundred and seventeen million dollars, and like I said at first, uh, over five thousand employees and twenty-two thousand students, uh, it definitely needs to be run like a business, uh, like a business from the, uh, superintendent standpoint. But we gotta, I'm a superintendent, uh, get it narrowed down and interview everyone. Once, once it gets narrowed down, we gotta hit from everyone, so we not miss a lot.
Dr. Gates?
Will you repeat the question again?
Do you see public education as a business?
Yes. It's about seventy businesses. That's how many schools we have. Each one of those schools need to be ran like a business. We need to have more timing to the principals so that they can make decisions. They need to make the budget. They need to look and see what they need. Not every school needs everything. That is the same. But by the same token, we need to make sure that those principals, and this is where the central office superintendent, uh, and school board setting policy procedures, comes in to make sure that those principals know how to do a budget, what they need, what they don't need. Right now, if I'm, uh, think I'm correcting this, Mr. Davidson, you can correct me if I'm wrong. Each school has their own phone system. Each school has their own copy machine. Each school has their own Coke machines. It's not a centralized thing. It's a school thing. If we did it centralized, we could get better deals because instead of one school, then you would have seventy-plus schools. That would save money. That would give you more money to put into what you need for the schools. So yes, it is a business. It needs to be run like a business, the business of educating our children.
Yes, the school system is a business. It is the people's business. Uh, it's your money, it's your schools. And I don't know how anyone can say it's not a, a business. I have, some people say, well, children are not widgets. We're not talking about in the classroom. We're talking about the business of the schools. And, uh, so many times, uh, people look at the education system as a, as a employment opportunity instead of an education opportunity. So many, sometimes the kids, students get lost in all of this. Like I say, if we have kids who are not reading, and somebody say we need more money to teach kids to read, how much money did it take to teach Abraham Lincoln to read? How much money did it take to teach George Washington to read? George Washington Carver? I bet their parents taught him to read for free. Now, money is not the answer to our educational woes. We need, if we don't get off of, uh, if we don't get off of this thing of trying to decide whether it's a business or not a business, or, uh, or all of these other things that we get sidetracked on, the kids are not graduating with what they need, and we get all caught up in all of this kind of nonsense. But this is a business. Anybody that has a four hundred, uh, four, a four hundred and seventeen million dollar business and thinks it's not a business, I don't, I don't know what you think you would call it. But that's why you need a manager, somebody that can, that knows the logistics of the school system to put things where they need to be. That is what we need in a, in a superintendent and in a school system. And yes, it is very definitely a business, uh, and that's why we need business people running it, and we need more business people on the school board to run it.
Dr. Gates goes first for the next question. Chattanooga two point O has completed their study but will not release any information until after the election. If you were elected, how would you respond if two point O recommends closing many schools and bringing in charter schools to replace them?
I don't know all the outcome of what they have surveyed, but I would question why we have to have so many charter schools. Do we have enough charter schools now? I don't know. We do need vocational and technical schools, and if we want to start a charter vocational and technical school, bring businesses in to teach these students, then yes. Um, two point O has gone throughout Hamilton County. They've had over a thousand, uh, community people, parents, coming to their meetings, getting, uh, putting in, giving input. Uh, they have had over, um, businesses coming in. They have had community leaders. They have had even the interfaith, the different churches coming in and giving. One of the things that I saw at the meeting that I went to was the fact that there are people who want to volunteer, and we need to put those people to work. But I would ask a lot of questions and find out why we have to have charter schools.
Ms. Thurman?
Okay, you say, you think that that's gonna be what's gonna come out in the report?
I'm just reading the question.
Okay. All right, uh, I don't have a problem with charter schools at all. We have, um, I think we have three, I think, here in Hamilton County right now. Uh, we have the Girls' Leadership Academy. We have Ivy Academy down here, and we have, uh, I think it, there are all these acronyms, uh, it, uh, can't remember what it's called.
CGLA.
CGLA, that's the Girls', that's the Girls' Leadership Academy. The other one's the one I'm talking about, the, uh, elementary. Yes, thank you. And, um, and so they already, they have quite a few students. Hundreds of students have decided to go to charter schools. That's the answer for a lot of people that are trying to escape some of the low performing schools that they feel like their children are trapped in, since we closed enrollment in Hamilton County. This is what happens. We have, uh, so many different kinds of schools here. I do not have a problem with charter schools. It's your money. If you want to send your child to a charter school, I don't have a problem with that. Like you say, we need to find out why people are want, uh, choosing to send their, uh, children to charter schools. And I tell you, a lot of the people I talked to at Ivy Academy that send their children there, discipline, discipline in the school where their children came from. Uh, the behavior was horrible in the schools, and they wanted their children out of those schools. That's one of the main reasons of the people that I talked to, especially in females. Uh, the Girls' Leadership Academy, um, has, is a, a, a good enrollment. Uh, Ivy Academy is adding a grade a year. They will continue to increase in enrollment. And by the way, we can't stop charter schools. If they write a charter and they do everything by the book, uh, and Hamilton County School Board, we can't, we can't stop them. Uh, the state legislator says we have to approve them if they meet all the criteria, and I don't have a problem with that.
If elected, how would you respond if Chadwick two point O recommends closing many schools and bringing in charter schools to replace them?
I definitely respect, uh, two point O's, uh, help and view on this. Uh, that's what their, uh, study found, and I'd want to support it. I don't, I don't know about closing many schools, but, uh, the charter schools are a, a big deal. People want them. Uh, I have a lot of questions about them, about sports programs. A lot of kids, uh, loving sports. My boys are big in, uh, sports, and I know right now that I don't have sports. Uh, I've, I've got a lot of questions. I'm trying to find answers out. And, uh, go from there.
Okay. Ms. Thurman, you get to go first on the next question. Is there any initiative to have a superintendent position become an elected position, and how would you feel about superintendent being elected? And has the position of grant writer been considered? Most school systems that use them bring in funding that alleviates the budget.
Okay, uh, there is legislation, and I think every time, I don't know, it's, it's never been brought up for a vote. I don't think it can ever get out of committee. Uh, they, every year they get, every time it's brought up, it gets a, a vote or two closer to go and, uh, do a vote from the State, Tennessee State Legislature about an elected superintendent. I do not have a problem with that. They elect us, uh, we elect our mayor. Um, so, you know, I don't have a problem with an elected superintendent. Uh, it does make things a little bit more, uh, I think you'd have to, the whole structure of the school system would have to change somewhat. It would have to look a whole lot more like the county commission does, uh, with a, with a mayor, and if the mayor's elected and the county commissions are elected, it would, we'd look a little bit more like they're set up kind of government there. But as far as a grant writer, I do not want another position in the central office. We just added a few, uh, when, uh, Dr. Kelly took over. Uh, he said he didn't add him. If he can make it budget neutral, he says we don't have, we don't have to approve the positions. The way you make it budget neutral is you just don't ever take the positions off where nobody's been for the last ten years, and all of a sudden, eureka, you have some money for another position, and it's budget neutral, so we don't have to, uh, approve it. So, uh, I, as far as a grant writer, you know, a lot of schools I know have grant writers in them, uh, and they get a lot of money that way. But as far as employing one at the central office, um, I'm just not up for another administrative position.
Uh, is there any initiative to have a superintendent position become an elected position, and how would you feel about that? And has a position of grant writer been considered?
The position on, uh, elected official, I'm, I'm totally against that. Uh, that would really narrow our choices. Somebody in the Ringo, they couldn't be our superintendent. Somebody lived in Ray County, couldn't be our superintendent. We need to broaden our views on the superintendent. Uh, I won't think that, I think it would eliminate, eliminate who, you know, who could get. Uh, as far as the grant writer, I think it'd be an excellent ideal. Not central office, maybe, uh, each school have their own. Uh, that, they get a lot of name right in those grants. Uh, I know in the fire department, we get grants, a lot of, buy a bunch of good stuff. Uh, so I know grants would be very helpful. Uh, I think we need to have more grant writers, uh, to get more stuff bought.
If you, through your state legis, legislature, decide that you want to elect a superintendent, and that's what is voted and changed on state law, then we'll have to go with that. We still need to find whether it's elected or we hire them, the best leader for this school system. But if the state says they're elected, then we will elect them. As far as grant writing, no, I don't want another position at central office. That could be professional development for the schools, so that people that wanted to be grant writers in the schools could learn how to do that. There are agencies all over, through the state government, local government, and even the federal government, that will come and teach people how to write grants. So if they, if a school wants to have a grant writer and they don't have one, here's an opportunity for professional development that will be a good thing.
Okay, Mr. Moses, you get first at the next question.
Okay.
At Sequoia High School, I understand that the diesel mechanics class is being cut at the end of the year. Do you support this decision, and what do you say to the children that will be affected by this position?
I definitely don't support that. I'm, I'm big about vocational, uh, I hate, I hate that. To the kids, I'm sorry. Uh, I wish, uh, I'd be able to do something. Uh, I wish they could have a more vocational, uh, schools or rental. We need them. If anything, maybe build one, uh, mega place that have all the diesel stuff. I'd do the diesel, do the, uh, woodworking, uh, car mechanics, auto mechanics, everything in one location. I'd make a super school, uh, do all that.
Dr. Gates?
If they're going to close the diesel mechanic school, then we need to partner with Chadwick Estate and their diesel mechanics. We need to partner with local area car dealers that sell diesel, um, vehicles. We need to work to where we can make sure that the students, if we're not able to do it at the school site, and we're not able to have a true vocational school, one north of the river, one south of the river, then we need to look, thinking outside the box, making a change, and find something that we can put those students where they will not lose the opportunity to get an education and learn how to be a diesel mechanic.
Losing the diesel mechanic position in Sequoia was one of the main reasons I voted against the budget this year. That, and also not having a algebra teacher, algebra two teacher and Spanish teacher is selfridges. I said, until we get those in there, I'm not going to do it because we always manage to add all these other classes for all these other schools on the other side of the river, and that's why I continue to vote against the budget. I say, I'm dug in on that, and that's just the way it is. I was very upset about them cutting the diesel mechanic classes at Sequoia. As you know, I am vocational. I have been a hairdresser for forty years, and I know that you can make a lot of money working with your hands, and you can make as much as a lot of people with a college degree. I'm, I, I love people that work with their hands. I have a great amount of respect for them because not everybody can be a diesel mechanic, not everybody can be a hairdresser, not everybody can be a welder, not everybody can do, a lot of the, a lot of things they do at Sequoia, they're gifts, in my opinion. And we quit letting Sequoia be a dumping ground for students years ago. You have to interview now to get into Sequoia, which I'm glad that we made that change because, uh, those are, uh, they should not be looked at as somewhere you go if you can't do anything else. It should be a privilege to get to go to a vocational school. Uh, but like I say, that is the reason that I did vote against, one of the main reasons I voted against the budget was cutting even more classes out of vocation. Everybody screams vocation, 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 and then we keep cutting and cutting and cutting classes at Sequoia.
Okay, Ms. Gates, Dr. Gates. What have you personally done to help struggling students excel when others have passed them on with no help?
As an educator in a classroom, I have had several students that I have had to go beyond the normal class assignments. If that child needed help in tutoring, I worked with them. I had a student come in in the ninth grade when I was teaching world geography at Red Bank High School. She spoke no English. Every day, we would have reading out of the textbook, and she would read. She started out reading one sentence. She didn't like doing that, but she realized what we were trying to do, help her build her English language skills. By the time she graduated, she spoke very good English, and she went on to UTC. I've had several other students that have come in that I have had to work with. One of them wanted to drop out. As a teacher, and the teachers that are in here will agree, I'm sure, you know that there are times that you are going to have to go beyond the normal classroom assignments. I hate to say, but some teachers don't. I always did. I have had students who have threatened to drop out, that are now in the military. I had one that threatened to drop out that now owns his own auto work business. I have one that just signed with the New Orleans Saints. I will do what I need to do and encourage other teachers to do. That's another professional development we could have, is teaching them traits to look for and how to help them.
Ms. Thurman?
Well, of course, I'm not in the classroom to, to do things like that, but, uh, what I have done, and, uh, trying to get students out of some of the schools where maybe they were struggling, maybe there was a bullying situation where there was autism involved to get them to the appropriate school where they needed to go, even if it was out of their zone. Uh, I had a couple of those this week. A fellow, uh, young man emailed me. He, he just got custody of his daughter. Uh, that she'd been living with her mother in a van in the parking lot here in Hamilton County, and he had just gotten custody of her. And where he lived was not where his daughter had gone to school last year, and they were going to try to force her to go to a new school. I personally thought this young lady had been through quite enough. She didn't need to go to a n, new school. She needed to go where her friends were and have a little bit of stability. We get those kinds of requests every year. It never fails that we get parents that want their children into a different school for different reasons. Um, I don't, it doesn't, I don't always do it because sometimes I think it's just because they want their children to go to school with their friends or something. But if it's a situation where a mother's trying to get her daughter away from a boy that's harassing her, or, uh, somebody trying to get, uh, their child away from somebody that continues, continues to bully them, you know, I will, I will go to the mat with those people to try to get them in, in another school and try to help them out. Also, uh, I, sometimes we get word of, of students that can't afford their, uh, graduation, uh, gowns, caps and gowns and all the graduation stuff. We've, uh, I've helped out with those kinds of things many times. Uh, I don't like to, to tell things like that, but it's, it's just, uh, just the truth. Uh, I'm big about athletics, as Tobin knows. Uh, I love athletics, and a lot of times there's girls on some of these ball teams that can't afford to go on trips. Their parents can't afford for them to go and, and, and have to pay for the overnight, for the rooms and food, and I will donate money to those sorts of things. That's the kind of things that, that I do. I guess that's the kind of things you're looking for. I don't know.
Wow, it's hard to come up with that. That's great ladies. Uh, I do the same. If I was a teacher or I was a school board member, I'd do the same thing. Uh, I help the people awful lot. Any way I can help, I try to. I, I, last year, uh, Fall War, I told, I got the PTA president involved. Hey, any of these kids can't go to on field trips because, you know, four dollars, they can't afford four dollars. Should we go to the zoo? Please let the PTA know when we can't let kids not be going to the zoo for four dollars. A lot of people in our, uh, district don't have four dollars. So we like to look out for everybody, and, uh, if any way I can help, I'll do it.
Okay, so, um, Ms. Thurman, start with the next one. Um, this is a two-parter. We got a couple of questions about your comments about math classes. We got a couple of questions about your comments about math classes. But I'm going to start with the one for all of you. What is your goal for the children in District Two in Hamilton County? What is your long-term goal? I'm concerned about your comment about the kids not taking four years of math because it would cut too much. How are children supposed to keep up with other kids? Our kids are already falling behind, and they will not be ready for college. So the first question is, what is your goals for District Two in Hamilton County? And the second is about, I mean, District One, I guess.
District One, yes.
All right. Well, my goal is of course to continue to improve, continue to move forward. About the math, not everybody should have to take calculus. I'm sorry, I just don't understand why everybody should have to take calculus. But like I say, the only way that you can, everybody can pass calculus is to make it where everybody can pass it. And to do that, you water it down for the people that really, who really need it. That's the problem that I have with, have with that. But they have to take four years of math, four years of science. Not everybody has to do that across the United States. And sometimes I wonder, I'll look at our graduation rates, are we comparing apples to apples? And no, we're not. We're not even comparing apples to apples here in Tennessee. When I find out that a lot of us counties have already been opting out of taking two years of a foreign language, and we've been, we've been teaching it. So we're not, so our graduation rates are going to look a little skewed as compared, compared to theirs. Now, of course, I love math. I did take some calculus, and I do know those sort of things. So it does, you know, it wasn't hard for me, but some kids just, you know, like I say, it just bothers me that we're not making it to where the people that really need it are getting what they need. Because I think it may have to be watered down so everybody can pass it. That's the problem I have with that. I wasn't talking so much about the math as the two years of foreign language. I think they're probably still going to have to take the four years of math, even if they can opt out of the foreign language. And what was the other one?
What is your goal for the children in District Two in Hamilton County, District One?
My goal right now is to get something done about the school where you're sitting. I was here talking to the new principal, Ms. Reynolds, the other day. We talked about the vision that we had for the school years ago. Gary Waters, Commissioner Skelton, and myself, we drew up a little plan for the school. I think maybe, I don't know if you were here, Mr. Davidson, when they kind of talked about doing that, about building on, getting the kids out of the portables that are in these terrible portables out back. It's time to get the kids at Saudi Daisy Valley out of the portable. That's one of my goals for this next term.
What is your goal for the children in District One and District Two?
I want to see the ACT, SAT scores go up. I want to see graduation rates go up. I want to provide each one of the students in Hamilton County, whether it's District One or one through nine, they all have to go up. We have got to show results. If we don't, we are not going to see businesses coming in. If businesses don't come in, we don't have tax revenue, then your taxes are going to go up. We need to prepare these students so that when they cross the graduation stage, they either have a marketable skill or they're ready to go to college. As far as four years of math in the state of Georgia, they have to have four English, four science, four math, four social studies. So it is that way in a lot of areas. And we need to have quality teachers teaching those skills, not watering down the content.
I'd like to see us go back to the three diplomas, or go to, not go back, go to the three diplomas. Vocational diploma, general diploma, and college prep diploma. College prep would require you to go have four years of math. Vocational diploma, I have two years of math. If you're going to vocational, you still have to have two years. I don't think you need, according to set of calculus to be a welder. And then as far as the general, people that, not everybody can go to college. So have three pathways, and choose which one you want to follow. Of course, your parents have to back you. If you want, everybody's starting out in college prep, and then once, you know, you saw that you ain't going to go to college, or your parents agreed with that, then you can drop down to the general, the vocational. And I like the idea that you have the pocket of vocational, you can just not be anybody in the vocational schools.
Okay, so, Mr. Moses, you get to first, still with this question. We have begged for a track at Saudi Daisy High School for over twenty years. It seems to fall on deaf ears. Every school in District One would benefit. With Utawa, Red Bank, and others getting resurfaced, why can't Saudi Daisy High School get a decent track?
I'm not a school board member yet, but I don't have the answer to that. But I'll look into it. Research or try to find out. Wish I had a better answer for you, but I don't have one.
No, Ms., Dr. Skates?
I would hope that whoever is elected for District One, that would be their priority. I've had several teachers call me, several coaches call me about that very problem. We need to find out why it's not been done. We've got money set aside that they are fixing things with the facilities that should be on there.
Well, first of all, they are working to get a track there, having to raise money because we do not build those things out of our, out of our maintenance budget. My, Mr. Davidson, don't we have to raise our own money to build those, to do those kinds of things? Like we're having to do the football field up there, to do the track. Steve Henry and I graduated from high school together. I remember since we were in elementary school, he's the principal of the high school. He is all about track. One of his daughters just went to the state track meet, did very well, I understand. So I talk to Mr. Henry about the track all the time. He has quite a large sum of money raised for that track. I think Mr. Skeller gave him quite a bit of money, discretionary money, or had some set aside, I think, for that. So we have to be, we have to raise the money. We don't do that in the school, school system, because if we did, we'd have to give everybody a track. Can you imagine how much money that would, that would cost? I think we build a new school, we need to figure that into the cost of building a new school. We haven't done that up to now. Everybody's had to, every school has had to raise their own money through sports boosters and, and community input and that kind of thing up till now. But that's the reason there's not a track. Because I have worked very hard with, and trust me, no one would like to see a track there any more than I would. Matter of fact, I just had this discussion with Mr. Henry last week about where we are on the track of Saudi Daisy High School. So that is in the works. What happened to Saudi Daisy High School is there, where comes, the water comes down the hill, it ran up under the track years ago, and in the winter, freezing, and thawing, and freezing, and thawing, broke it all up. So that's what happened to the track there. They did at one time have a nice track, but they have not had a track made there in over twenty years. You're correct. And hopefully in a few years, maybe the next year or so, that will, that will also be taken care of. And like I say, I'm self-reliant, be able to use the new track when it's there. There's already been discussion of that, so I'll look forward to that happening, hopefully, pretty soon.
Okay, Dr. Skates, so I have individual questions for each of you now. So, Dr. Skates, what would you do that would be different from Ms. Thurman? And what do you mean by change?
People that I've talked to in District One who had students in the schools complain that they don't see the school board member there. I will be in the schools. I have been in the classroom. Not going there to spy on the principal, won't go there to spy on the teachers. I want to go, I would like to be able to go back into the classroom at the schools and do a lesson, or civics is my big thing, government is my big thing. Teach the students, whether they're elementary, whether they're middle school or they're high school. Need to be in the schools, need to work a relationship with those schools. And that's where the change is coming in. People have said they won't change. They haven't seen product in the last twelve years, and they're ready for a change.
Okay, it's your turn. But I have a different question for you.
Oh, okay.
You just suggested that if we got rid of ten percent of the students, behavior problems would be solved. Since our nation educates all students, what are you actually proposing? If we send ten percent of our students out, where will they go? And how is that addressing student needs?
If they're over eighteen, they don't need to be in the schoolhouse. I'm sorry, but those kids that are over eighteen, they're adults in every sense of the word. And so that should, that should not be, they should not be there to disrupt the classroom. That was a hypothetical. It may be five percent in some schools, it may be two percent in some schools. But if the kids are there and they're over eighteen, then why should we allow them to continue to disrupt the class? And everybody in the class, they don't get, they don't get any educational time at all. No instructional time at all. In some of the schools, we have someone that will start a fight. Friends, two friends will start a fight, just so they'll lock down the school for the rest of the day. Some of you don't understand what's going on in these schools. These kids are not stupid. They know what they're doing. They'll start a fight, they'll lock down the school, and nobody gets to go to class the rest of the day. They're in one class, locked down. Now, those kinds of things, they stop, yes, if we get those kids out of school, I say get them out of the schoolhouse. You know, I'm not advocating that we do anything except take care of the problems. Only the principal in that school knows who those kids are. I don't know who those kids are. Like I say, maybe just one, maybe just two. But if they're just coming to school for a stage for their bad behavior and to deal drugs, I say they're out of the schoolhouse. They're not there to learn anyway, they don't want an education. And they just want to keep everybody else from getting one. Those are the kids that I'm talking about. And instead of just ten percent not getting educated, right now, in some schools, we have a hundred percent not getting educated. So you make the call.
Okay, Mr. Moses, would you tell us your experience of making a budget in the largest amount you have worked with except for your personal account?
I never have made a budget. It's my, it's my home budget. I do well, well on end. I've never made a budget. I'm a firefighter. If I knew how to make a budget, I wouldn't be a firefighter, or a, or a school board member.
Okay, so last question, and this is a little bit different for all of you, but it's kind of the same question. Since Ms. Thurman and Dr. Skates claim to have a PhD, would they share with us to, in what, and what is the highest education degree they have obtained? And also, would Mr. Moses share with us his education background and highest level he has attained? And what area of specialty it would in? And I do believe it's Ms. Thurman's. No, it's your turn, Mr. Moses.
I'm a lieutenant in the fire department. I took a lot of classes to become a lieutenant. I had to have five for one, five for two, instructor one, ADF, PDF, a bunch of stuff to make lieutenant. I'm also an EMT. As I was going to be an EMT, I went to the chain of state for a couple of years of criminal justice until I got in the police department. I realized you don't have to have a college degree to be a policeman. So I did have some college in chain of state. That's about the education I have. I'm a substitute teacher, so I sub-sen, I passed a test to become a substitute teacher. So I sub, do the best I can do.
Dr. Skates?
Mine is an EDD, which is educational doctorate. The difference between an educational doctorate and a true PhD is a philosophy of a doctorate, is a PhD. I made the choice to go back to school and get my masters. I also made the choice to go back to school and get my doctorate. My doctorate is in educational leadership. I wanted to be the best teacher that I could be. I wanted to make a difference in students' lives. I'm still taking classes. I now have eight of eighteen hours in history so that I can teach history on a college level. My mother has jokingly said that the day that I die, Jimmy Williamson will have to wait to hold my funeral because I've got to finish taking the class. I think as a teacher, we must continue to learn. The world around us is changing, and we have to work towards those changes if we're going to be in education. Whether it's on the school board, whether it's in the classroom, whether it's you as a parent, we need to keep up, we need to provide these children with what they need. The support they need, the love that they need, the compassion. We have to encourage them to be the best that they can be. That's why I went to school and got my education that I've gotten, so that I could be a better teacher.
First of all, I never said I had a PhD. I said I was a PhD, and that stands for professional hairdressers. For some of you, they have not, not gotten that. Some of you didn't get the memo. Didn't get the joke. Matter of fact, Eddie Holmes, used to be the head of NAACP, he talks about the beauty shop every once in a while and sticks his head in and says, there's a doctor in the house. And so, you know, I don't tout how much I know about everything. Just because you have a few degrees doesn't not mean you know everything about everything. I've spent the last forty years talking to people just like you. I've spent forty years talking to taxpayers. And I bet you that I just know a whole lot more about some things than other people do. One thing, as a mother, I know things that mothers know that nobody else can know if you're not a mother. You get an education in that. You get an education in being a grandmother. And as far as not being in schools, I work five days a week. I don't take off and work. Like I say, I don't get paid days off. If I don't work, I don't get paid. If there's a principal in this district that says that they did, that they want to see their school board member because they're not getting something they need, that is their fault. In the days of text messages, let me tell you how things work these days. Text messages, I called Tobin one day, asked him, I need you to get outside and make pictures of portable, send them to me, I need them for the school board meeting tomorrow night. He did that, he made the pictures. I had pictures blown up, gave to school board members, showed them what Self Creek Middle School looked like, middle high school looked like, so I could get the funding to do a new school. Did it that quick. I don't have to run up there with a camera. I don't, he knows me, he calls me all the time. All the principals call me, and they say if they don't call me, it's their own fault. I can't imagine anybody that wants to see a politician hang around their school all day. Principals are already out of their buildings, one day a week, a mandatory meeting. That's twenty percent of their work week. Do you think they want to tie up another day of babysitting for me? No, they do not. If they do, they're not doing their job. Now, like I say, anybody in this, in this district that says that they're, they want to see their school board member, they want me in their school, I don't understand that. I'm there when they need me, and if they don't, if they haven't gotten what they need, it's their own fault, not mine.
Okay, actually, our last question is just for Ms. Thurman. With your long reign, do you accept any responsibility for-
With my long hot reign?
Right.
Like a queen or something, okay.
Do you accept any responsibility for Hamilton County having some of the worst schools in the city?
Well, like I say, I voted against everything that they've wanted to do. I voted against the new math. I voted against this terrible jam plan that we have for teaching students to read. One vote can't stop anything, people, it takes five. With five votes, you make the front door, the back door. With one vote, you can't do anything. So like I said, if I had gotten more people to vote with me on a lot of things, things would be different. But like I say, why you change, want to change the one person in the minority that's beating their head against the wall to get something changed? I just don't get it. You know, like I say, nobody fights any harder for the taxpayers, nobody fights any harder for their district than I fight for mine. Nobody goes any more prepared, any more prepared than I do for school board meetings. And I will fight, and I will keep fighting because that's what I got elected to do. But do I take responsibility for, well, like I say, a lot of the things that we were lagging, math, reading, are two of the things that I, that math program, we should send out, we should send out letters of apology to every parent in this county for this terrible math that we use in Hamilton County. And we can't seem to get it changed. They say every time they're going to change it, and every year, it looks just like it did the year before. It's horrible. And I have a math teacher over here shaking his head, I know who he is. Yes, you're right. And those kinds of things, like I say, one vote won't change that. So would I say accept responsibility? I don't know. I don't know what you want me to do, except vote against what they do. That's all, that's all I can do, I'm one vote. And like I say, we're getting closer now, I get some six-three votes. I'm always excited to see a six-three vote. I'm glad I have some friends. And then sometimes, you know, I'm, sometimes I get a, I've even had a few five-four votes. Getting a little bit closer. But, you know, do I accept responsibility? You know, it's, it's hard to say when you're just voting against everything that they want to do. Superintendent, people say, well, you, you're against everything the superintendent wants to do. Well, if what I think, if he's doing what I, if he's not doing what I think he needs to do, then I'll vote against him every time.
Time for closing remarks, Mr. Moses, you can go first.
Thank you for coming, thank y'all for having me. Just like, I don't have all the answers, but I promise y'all I'll do my best to find out answers for you. I work hard, I've been going door to door. I don't have a big name, I'm not the vice mayor, the school board member, but I'm doing my best. Get involved, I want to get, I want to be involved, so I protect your vote.
Dr. Skates?
I want to serve. I have a heart to serve. I had a student one time ask me why I sat on the commission, why I did all the extracurricular activity. And I said, because that's the way I was brought up. I was brought up that you give back to your community. So that when I meet my maker, he said, you took, you left more than you took. I want to serve the students of Hamilton County. I want to bring change. I want us to not have an eight to one vote. I want us to have- I want us to have votes that count, votes that will make students better with their education process and preparing them for jobs after they get out. I will donate my time. I will be in the schools. I will be in the communities. I will do what is needed to be a good school board member and to move forward.
Well, to say there's quite a difference in the school board candidates up here. Well, I don't want to tell you what I wish I could do or what I might do. I can tell you what I have done. Been a lot of successes in District One. Say, we haven't had a lot of the academic successes I would like to say, because I look at things, like I say, as a taxpayer, not as an educator. The educators always want to tinker with things and make them, because they think that they think they have a better way of doing things, when really the old way worked a whole lot better. And that is just evident by the fruit. And so I can say, we just look at things a little bit differently. I'm not going to tell you what I wish I could do. You can say what I have done. I continue to fight for every dollar available of capital project money for this district up here. Like I say, this school right here is on my next project. And right here in my notes, it says, I'm trying to... We're trying to get some property here for Cell Creek, adjacent to Cell Creek. We would like to have all athletic facilities on Cell Creek campus. And also, right here, it says in my notes, "Saudi Daisy High School Track," because I did call last week and talk to Steve Henry about that. Those are just some of the things I'm looking at. But I promise you, I will continue to fight, to do everything I can to change the math, the way we teach math. The way we teach reading in Hamilton County has to change. It shouldn't cost a few million dollars to teach kids to read. We should be able to do that without any trouble. And it's educational fraud, what we're doing in some of our schools and college education. Because I continue to fight for you, I will continue to represent you, I will continue to have open line of communication. My cell number's out there, website, Facebook, however you want to get in touch with me, so many different ways anymore. But I just ask for your continued support. Thank you.
Thank you. And I do have a stack of questions here that we weren't able to get to. I wanted to ask you guys, some of the other candidates in the other districts have said that I can email them those questions and you'll respond. Are you guys okay with me doing that? Okay, great. I'll email them the rest of your questions. We'll send them out in an email, so please make sure that you have signed in, and we'll also put them on our website and Facebook. I want to say thank you to the candidates. It's not easy to volunteer for public service and often tax collectives, so thank you so much for volunteering. Can we get a hand?